Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of October 31st, 2017. We are sorry for the delay. First item is a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's going to make a statement about the power?
Sure, no, we just have an update on the power situation with the storm. Central Maine Power has, what, 2,370 customers in Acton, to which 1,679 of them right now are without power. So that's more than, large amount, more than half of the town right now is without power. And that's as of quarter after four this afternoon, yeah, quarter after four this afternoon. So they're doing what they can do to get things back up from what I've seen. They're going around getting the trees off the wires, getting, making the wires accessible, and then the next crew comes in and they're going to start the hookup. So we don't have any estimate, estimation as to how long it's going to be, but they're diligently working on it. So I did see a thing where there was, Central Maine Power had over, over 350,000 customers without power as of, I think, last night or this morning, so.
And if I can add at least, the fire chief was in this afternoon and indicated that he hasn't gotten any calls or requests for shelter, but certainly if anybody needs, you know, a warm place to stay or a warm shower, something, to contact us and we can, you know, think about putting a shelter together. But luckily, the weather has stayed a little warm enough to get through this first round.
It's the biggest saving grace of the storm is the warmer weathers.
All set? Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes of last meeting?
Make a motion, we approve of the minutes of the last meeting.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Department head committee chair updates. Anybody out there? Not today? All the business. Zoning Board of Appeal Appointment Withdrawal.
Just, this is on there for an FYI, I think that's sent through an email, but I wanted to have a paper trail. After consideration, Dr. Williams has declined the ZBA appointment.
Okay, thank you. Bridge cleanup easements. The Cindy Hart follow-up.
Yep, so this is an update from comments under public, from public comment last week. The, I don't know which one you want to talk about first. Bridge cleanup, she essentially was asking what the board was going to do about it. So it was just a follow-up from that.
So the cleanup, obviously, we don't want any volunteers down there doing the road commissioner's job for multiple reasons. I've also been away, so I haven't had a chance to get in contact with Wakefield to pick up any of that loose information from 10 years ago.
And I did speak to Mr. Winchell. A couple of things, he would prefer going forward if the board emailed him questions so that he can have them in writing and be able to reference back, because he feels like some of these things have come up, not so much with you guys, but maybe over the years. So he's asking that we contact him in email. And also that if people have concerns with the bridges or roads or areas that's on his side, to call him directly.
Or email him.
Or email him. And the town directory has email addresses for, actually, let me take that back, the road commissioner's email might not be on there, but I can fix that. But certainly their phones are on there, so contact them directly.
And the easements, we are...
So, yeah, last week, we kind of started talking about it for the first time, I think the board was in agreement that it might be something worth looking into, and we were going to kind of reach out to the road commissioners, decide if it was something they wanted to handle or the road committee. Haven't had a chance to put that email in writing to Mr. Winchell. Didn't know if you had any further thoughts on it?
Well, I brought it up last week that I thought we should move forward with it, but not realizing how quickly November was hitting us as of tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I think probably we need to postpone it until springtime and think about it again then.
It could be better, because if we open it up now, we could have people saying, you know, they need time to look things over, and they could shut us down, and then we don't have places to turn around in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
And that would kind of put us in a predicament. So I think we should wait until spring, too.
Yeah.
And then we've got all summit to work on it, if people have concerns or, you know, I don't want to put either one of the road commissioners in spots where they don't, don't have turnarounds. Some people may not want to sign something, so.
And like Ed said, I mean, we're so close to winter at this point, I think the Farmer's Almanac said that it was going to snow twice in November, so let's see if that's right. But there's just, I mean, at this point, it's just too close to open up.
Yeah.
So we'll take it off the agenda until spring and then more determinations about who's going to move forward with it.
Yep. Buzzard Road, Dennis Long, follow-up.
So you're certainly welcome to join us, but it's going to be short and sweet. Mr. Lenkowski was out of town from the Wednesday after the meeting until today. The board can attest that he came in on his, on his way home from the office today. The Buzzard Road file that I had was too much to scan an email to him, so he was kind enough to stop by on his way home from the office to pick it up. So he'll start looking into it as early as tomorrow. We don't have a meeting next week, and I think that based on the size of the file, it might take him a little longer, but I have been very clear with him what the question was as far as, you know, once the road forks, where the, where the townway stops. And he knows all the different opinions and what we've done in the past, you know, who instructed them to stop and why, and we kind of went over the whole history. So everything's in his hands and I trust he'll get back to us soon.
Warrant Finance, procedural packet. School follow-up.
So, two things, so as, just in case anybody watching this doesn't know how, exactly how the auditing works, so the Town of Acton contracts with a company named RHR Smith and Company, they're out of Buxton. We have two different individuals. We have an individual, Bruce Netto, that does our audit here at the school, at the town hall, and a gentleman named Bill Hall that has done it at the school for the last few years. We did send both of those individuals over the document presented from Warrant and Finance. This is the response that I think that Kim referenced and that comes from, from Bill Hall. So it says, "After reading Mr. Gore's letter and your response to the Select Board," this is addressed to Kim, "here are some general comments I have on the matter. We understand that the Acton School budget, which operates as a department of the town, does not follow the 3% fund balance rule that the state sets as a guideline for other RSUs and other recognized school systems according to statute. The Acton School Department has its own recognized fund balance policy, which it has developed and follows. In regards to the state statutes for RSUS and other, RSUS and other recognized school systems, being a department of the town, many of the statutes do not apply to the Acton School Department. As for the Acton School reserve accounts, these funds were set up by the town, vote by the townspeople. The articles were written by a legal firm and approved by the school, the town, and eventually the townspeople. The language that was in the article is what guides the school department and how they can spend and what they can spend it on. It is the opinion of RHR Smith and Company, the school department was well within its legal right to have the reserve accounts and follow statute in establishment." If you have any further questions. So that came to Kim. And I know the board had a chance to speak to Ron Smith, who's the owner of the company, in regards to the town piece of it.
He's been in the business for 25 years and sees that the document was well-written, but it's basically just a, an opinion and does not feel that the town is doing anything illegal with the reserve accounts.
Or any accounts. What, some of the specific questions we asked him is that, you know, when you, when you audit and when you, you know, it's not only, you know, figuring out how much, how many taxes were committed to the tax collector and subtracting that from what's been collected and determining what's left in the general ledger, it's, are you analyzing the warrant articles and determining if to raise and appropriate or to expend if they're worded correctly? And the board had a conversation with him on that as well. So, you know, like we often say, there are a few different ways to get to places. It doesn't mean that one's right or wrong, but they have no concerns with the way the school or the town are running. And I think it's important to note that they, that he commended the Town of Acton for the job that it's done and situation it's in for the last, you know, five or eight years.
He did, he did say that, you know, prior to them, well, prior to them coming on board, they did find a lot of things that were not done appropriately and was, you know, amiss.
And he, didn't he reference, he referenced, if you look at the town audit, sorry, not to cut you off, if you look at the audit, there's a management letter in there every year and that gives his recommendations.
Yep.
And I'll be honest, one of his recommendations every year is that we have more cross-training. You know, there's not enough cross-training in the office, you know, if something happens to the treasurer, or something happens to the town clerk, cross-training is something that we always work on and every year they put that in their management letter. But in the beginning, if you went back, you know, 10-plus years, you would see things in the management letter about changing wordings in articles. And, and that was done over the years and, so I'm just, you know, I'm not sure what direction, I know the Warrant and Finance is going to be having a meeting coming up, I'm sure they're looking for some sort of support, oh, not support, excuse me, some sort of response from the board, and Judy has something to add, we're just looking for direction.
Yeah, Judy Shane, Chairman of the School Committee. I just wanted to share some things, just to clear up some other misunderstandings that have come out of the letter that came, the suggestions that came from the Warrant and Finance Committee, so that the selectmen have the information and people understand what the information is. It's, all of our, all of our school board duties are totally guided by the main school law. And our duties are to follow the school law and the legislature and what they put out about education to a T. It has nothing to do with the MTA or the Main Teachers Association or the, or the school unions or anything like that. We have to go by what the law tells us when it comes to contractual, contractual negotiations or anything else. It's in this book and it's defined very clearly for us. What I'd like to give you is, this is kind of a summary that comes at the end of the Main School Book of School Law, and anybody can get this by going online and going to www.schoollaw.com, and it will give you all of the information. You can get a copy of the book from there if you want to go into it a little bit deeper. I just wanted to read a couple of things to clarify. Right at the very beginning of the school board is, it says, "The school committee acts as a public board. It in no sense represents the town. Its members are chosen by the voters of the town, but after election, they are public officers deriving their authority from the law and responsible to the state for the good faith and rest of their acts." So it clearly says in there that we're responsible to make sure that we're following these laws. And many of the things that have come up in the last couple of weeks that have been suggestions for what the school board should be doing in regard to negotiation and in regard to budgeting and some other things, clearly would, would be in contrast to the law as they print it in here. We're responsible for hiring the superintendent, we're responsible for the well-being of all of our students, of all of our staff, and, and to the community. There was also some discussion about the fact that Acton is just a little small community, so we shouldn't be treated like everybody else, the big ones, but I just want you to know that the reason that we are a municipal and not in an RSU is because of all the work that the school committee did a few years ago when we were going through the reorganization of all the school systems in town, in the state, I mean. And what happened at that time was that if we had been forced, and they were really, literally trying to force us to join up with somebody else, the last attempt the state made was to put us into a, an AOS with Wells and Agunkwit. If that had ever happened and that had really become, become a reality, we would not have any autonomy in our school system now. And we wouldn't have any say in what we're paying into the budget either as well. One of the things at that time was that if, if you get into a system like that, then all the teachers have to have the same pay, no matter what school system or what town they're in. And we were certainly not anywhere as near up to what Wells and Agunkwit were paying their teachers at that time. So the state defines a school system as either a department approved by the state of a municipality or a department approved by a state of an SAD and they want to define what the SAD is, or an RSU, or an AOS, they, they define all those things. But the fact that we are a small municipal system does not mean that we can bypass anything or do things any differently than any of the larger systems do. It's just that we're fortunate that we still have our autonomy, we still have our, our school, which is an excellent school, and we still, we still can keep our costs down a lot more than they would be if we had been in one of the larger systems. So I hope that clears up any, any questions about, because we're a little school in a little town, we don't need to do what the big systems do, that we can bend the rules and let people come in and tell us how to negotiate and everything. All the negotiation laws are in the book. And yes, the teachers' unions do sometimes utilize advice from the MTA when it comes to negotiations, but at the same time, the board has their own legal advice, too. So it's an equal balance whenever that's going on. So I hope that clears up any questions that anybody has about those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think the school does an excellent job. I think the school board in particular does a remarkable job at putting together what they do every year, and they're to be commended for it. I don't see any issues with anything that they're doing.
Um, personal property tax is up next. Where?
Yeah, but I think he's under, I mean, he kind of falls under the Warrant and Finance, because he, he is Warrant and Finance.
Sorry. Still on the school.
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Fine. I think that someone perhaps has gotten the wrong idea. Mr. Gore has for many years worried primarily about the terminology. Certainly, the committee was not indicating that we should go to a consolidated type of school district. I think having an independent school district as a department of the town is really very, very nice, and it's very helpful. And I think hopefully it gives the students a better, a better foundation educationally. What we are saying, though, is that certain terminology needs to be looked at because it has not worked in the past. If these people, Mr. Netto and Mr. Hall, approved of the budget that went over 3%, then I don't know if they're the people that should be writing an opinion, because that was definitely wrong and that was against the law. Okay? All we're saying is that as far as, as Acton is concerned, we applaud the fact that we have the school district set up that we have. I think Mr. Gore, and I don't want to speak for him, but I know him well enough, we've talked about it within the committee and outside the committee. Mr. Gore was worried primarily because of confusion that has occurred in the past with regards to reserve accounts especially, and reserve accounts versus reserve statutory accounts. And that was the thing primarily that was going on, and people were all confused as to how many types of accounts there were. So part of this was to sort of clear up the air as far as, as terminology and phraseology. And the other question I have is, did anyone ask these two people, Mr. Netto and Hall, whether or not you have a right to commit funds for future annual town meetings in one town meeting? And that's what we're doing at the present time by going ahead and approving the contract for three years. That's the only question we're asking. We're not saying it's wrong, all we're doing is questioning its validity. And certainly, as I said, it's not a matter of, of saying that something is, shouldn't be done. We're not saying that. All we're saying is that the town has the right to phrase and do things in that regard that is not against the Constitution and not against the state, that may not be done in these larger consolidated type of school districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as entering into multi-year contracts, I feel as though they are elected...
You spoke to the treasurer about that.
Yeah, they're elected officers, just as we are, we enter into multiple-year contracts with cable.
The, the contract deputy?
Yeah, and so, yep, so I'm not sure, so we are, when we vote one year, we are actually voting for future years as well.
Right, if it's not, Michelle talked to you about that, if it's not appropriated, if the next year the, the townspeople vote down the deputy contract, the, I mean, not the, the deputy salary that you've already signed a three-year contract for, she said that...
We either get rid of him or we find the money somewhere else.
Well, if you're in a contract, you're going to find the money somewhere else.
Yeah, you're going to find the money somewhere else.
Yep.
And really, I don't know of any school systems around the area that negotiate a one-year school contract.
Right, and, and most all of York County has three-year contracts with the deputies. So I'm going to, let me address that exact question, just the way that you stated it, and we'll get an opinion, I'll get, not the auditors, but I'll have a, get a response. Because clearly, it's allowed, I, I mean, I can't state where or how, but every municipality does it, so.
And it's my understanding that if, if for some reason the budget doesn't pass or is reduced, then it's up to the school committee to make, to decide where those cuts come. And I think you'll find in almost every school system that it is the fixed, the fixed costs of salaries and fixed things within the school, like oil and heat and things like that, that take up a majority of every school budget. It's not unique to us.
One second, Judy. So I'm just going back to Dr. Williams so I can understand, so in Bill Hall's email, it says, "We understand the Acton School Department, which operates as a department of the town, does not follow the 3% fund balance rule that a state, that the state sets as a guide for RSUs and other recognized school systems according to statute."
We have, we have developed a fund use policy which does fall within the guidelines of the 3%.
So has your fund balance ever been more than 3%? I mean, I guess because he, he made the comment that those two gentlemen should be in the position. What does your policy say?
If it gets to a certain point and it's beyond that, we give it back to the town.
So the policy that you have doesn't go over 3% either?
No.
So it's, that's what he's saying, is that it's...
Right, no, it doesn't.
Okay. So it's not that the auditor, Dr. Williams, is allowing them to use a policy that goes over 3%, you just have a different policy that rewards it, but it's still 3%.
And I believe that all of our policies are online on the school website, so if you go to the school website, you can look up and find the fund use policy, and it will clearly define there how, how that works, but we are within the guidelines because that's, that's the state law.
Right.
That isn't something that we can decide to do or not to do. That's also a part of the state law.
I just want to make sure that was clear, that you were in the 3%.
I thought so. Did he write, does he write the email wrong or did he just word it?
Well, and that's what I was thinking, is that maybe, that it was taken, Dr. Williams took it differently, so.
Okay.
It's that they don't follow the rule, but they have their own recognized policy.
Yep.
So you're saying in that policy, it references the 3%.
It's in there.
The 3% is, is definitely in there because that's...
I just read it today, I'm like, what are you...
If it was last, last year or the year before that, that we had to come up with a, with a definite policy and the guidelines were in there for the 3%, and that's what our policy reflects.
All right. So what is the direction of the board? I've got the question for the three years, just so we can all get clarity on, on that, on obligating the town to something the following year in a contract, whether it's town or school. But in regards to the rest of the document, where do you want to go with this?
I, you know, if it's just the wordsmithing, that the school's using the terminology expend instead of appropriate, I think that it's, I'd rather have the school use their own terminology, they're following a guide that, that gets them there. Keep it, keep it, the school articles the way they are written.
Judy, when the consolidation happened, how many years ago now, with, with Acton and the breakoff, did Drummond and Woodson write these, didn't Drummond and Woodson write these articles? These warrant, these...
Our warrant articles are all written...
By Drummond and Woodson?
By, by our legals, because they have to follow a certain pattern...
Right, with the cost centers.
That the state sets forth with cost centers, and we're not allowed to deviate from them. There, some of the articles are word for word, this is the way you put it in.
So Drummond and Woodson is, is the, the school's attorney, different than the town's Burke and Clegg, who oversees our warrant articles?
They're always approved by, by our attorney, and also, I believe you run them by the town attorney as well?
No.
No?
I think in the, in the very beginning, when we had a couple of questions, when the consolidation, at first the two questions happened, we might have gotten a couple of things to get on the same page, but we don't every year now, because, I mean, Drummond and Woodson, you know, is probably one of the highly most known reputable school attorneys. They cover most of York and Cumberland Counties, so we would never question them.
And our warrants are always run by them before they're presented to, to the town?
Perfect. I think they helped write the consolidation law when that all happened.
Hmm.
So what do you, what do you want to do? Do you want to still have the meeting with the Warrant and Finance? Somebody want to go to the Warrant and Finance, give the board their thoughts? I mean, we need to find, I mean, we, what we said after the last town meeting was that we would address this so that every year it doesn't continue to, to come forward, so.
I think we've gotten our answers from...
Ron?
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I agree with him, I don't think we need to go any farther. I don't know how you feel. Or, or Ed, but I mean, the school is set up the way the school is set up, and, and we've looked into it, and they're doing what they're supposed to. Nothing's come back.
And remember, I mean, some of the terminology words reference the town, too, it's not just the school.
Right.
The terminology reference the way that we've used them in the warrant articles, so.
But we've also asked, you know, about the town, and nothing's come back saying that we can't use the terminology that we use, so.
Our auditor has not had an issue with the way that it, that either the, our auditor with the town has not had an, had an issue with it, the gentleman that does the school hasn't had an issue with it.
And when we, when we create warrant articles like the Goat Hill, for example, or the Windows Loan or something, Burke and Clegg is writing those articles for us, so we're essentially, you know, getting the wording, so the attorney, when it doesn't fall into the auditor, is writing the article, so.
Right.
I mean, I should say something, you know, as well.
Yeah, like I said last week, I don't see an issue with the way with, that it's being done. You know, it's legal, it's above board, it's right there in plain sight. I hate to bring it down to the fact that it's, you know, maybe one or two individuals' interpretation, but it's, it's legal, it's the way that we do it. It's, there's not an issue with it. I mean, if, if our, if our attorney or our auditors had an issue, I'd be the first one to step right up and say, okay, we're doing something wrong, but we clearly are not. So I'm happy the way we're doing it.
Me, too.
Me, too.
That comes off the agenda?
Yes.
Has been complete?
Yep.
Personal property tax. William, Williams, follow-up.
Yeah, this is similar to Buzzard Road, had a lot more to it that we wanted to be able to present to, to him, so I'm going to ask you to table it down until after the election so that we can have a slideshow for you, have a breakdown of each year, and show you where the values have shifted so that you can see it and we can make sure he gets, they get all the information, so.
Okay.
Not quite done with that one.
All right.
New business zoning board of appeals alternate appointment.
Yes, so Roland Waterhouse spoke to me last, last week, earlier this week, and indicated that he would sit on the alternate spot. This is going to leave one more alternate open.
To Roland Waterhouse, the selectman of the municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as a zoning board of appeals alternate within and for the municipality of Acton until June 2018.
Make a motion, we approve Roland Waterhouse's appointment to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
So every year, we've, I notice, we pay dues to an organization through Southern Maine, it's called Southern Maine Regional Planning and Commission, they go out for certain things, they go out to bid on behalf of York County or on behalf of anybody that's a member. They do this for copy paper, and one of the other things they do it for is road salt bids. So they call it their cog bid. So they went out to bid, I've got results here for you. The Morton Salt is at $60.60 delivered, Eastern Salt is at 63.63. There were other bids that it was sent to, it doesn't look like they replied. So 60.60 is the low, the Town of Acton has used Granite State for the last five-plus years. I spoke to both road commissioners, they're happy with them, and they're at the same price, $60.60. So it's the same as the cog bid, and the road commissioners are requesting that you grant the 1718 road salt to them again.
Make a motion, we approve the 60.60 for Granite... Make a motion, we approve the 60.60 for Granite State for the salt bid.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Atlantic Broadband.
So, Metrocast is being bought out. If you haven't heard by now, Metrocast has been bought out by a company called Atlantic Broadband. They contacted us back in, I'd say August, September, giving us a copy of the franchise authority to basically take over from Metrocast. So, when they sent us over this franchise authority late summer, I sent it over to Burke and Clegg for him to review. He had a couple of changes. I've got an email here from Jill Kramer, who's Brad's assistant, saying that she reviewed the cable TV franchise agreement and proposed resolution, and determined that it's acceptable, acceptable for the Board of Selectmen to approve and sign the contract for TV services to Atlantic Broadband. You're basically just signing it over. It has nothing to do with Channel 26 or the contract with that. We'll be negotiating that separately, but that won't happen until the beginning of the year. So, the board may also propose resolution with one suggested amendment. She wanted to change the title of ordinance in the middle of the first page to a resolution, and she references why. So, that's that. And I emailed this to you back in the summer. Sorry it's been so long. It's taken a while to get some responses. They don't take over until January 1st, so it wasn't a real big hurry. But this is the findings and resolution that Atlantic Broadband would like you to sign. If you want more time with it, you're certainly welcome. Just let me know what your intention is.
So, I asked you this earlier, if I don't sign this, what happens? Just so you guys know at home.
She did say, she says, "What happens if you don't sign this?"
We don't sign this.
And, and I'm not an attorney, so I will also tell you, it's the same thing I told her then, which I believe is the answer. So, I mean, this is a franchise agreement, so that Atlantic Broadband can take over Metrocast's lines. If you don't sign it, then Metrocast won't be an option in the town of Acton. And I know that there are a lot of concerns with Metrocast out there, and all we can do is hope, under new management, that maybe there'll be some changes with Atlantic Broadband. But if we don't sign the agreement, then it won't even be an option. I mean, at least now, people can have Metrocast and complain about it and not like it, or go with Dish or DirecTV. But if you don't sign it, then it's just not going to be a choice.
Okay. So, there you have it.
And, you know, we'll give out some contact information for Atlantic Broadband, and whatever the concerns of Metrocast for the last X amount of years are, maybe we can start forwarding to this, forwarding to this gentleman. Or if you have direct concerns now, I mean, we don't have to get this back to him until January 1st, so we can sign it, and I'll hold it, and you can start sending me the questions. And, I mean, the biggest concern with Metrocast has been what?
I think internet. I haven't heard anybody talk about cable TV, but internet and...
Cost.
Cost, the price.
Which we, which we have no control over.
Right, and the cost, unfortunately, is a monopoly.
That's, that's all get to do with, with them and, and the government. They set the prices. So, there is no, they will not come in and buy these lines.
Yeah, we've, we have spoken to Time Warner, a couple of surrounding ones, and it's just not, it's not financially feasible for them at this point to expand their lines into these small towns.
It's like asking public service in New Hampshire to come in and take over the CMP telephone lines. It is not an option. They won't do it, so...
I mean, I think eventually, there'll be some competition, you know, similar to electricity. I think we just started seeing competition with electricity, what, maybe three, five years ago?
Yep.
I think that eventually, we will. And again, I think we just have to hope that this company...
I mean, I, personally, I had Metrocast when I moved up here. I paid a lot of money to have the line run to the house, because it's about 800 feet. And that's, what, last year, the year before, I got, last year, I got rid of Metrocast for the TV side of it.
Yep.
Because of the cost. I still have it for the internet, which, it's not great, I got to admit. But I went with DirecTV.
What are other, other internet options in Acton?
Not unless you live on the New Hampshire border.
Yeah.
Because I, I know where I am in Shapley.
I don't know whether Verizon has, has it on. Verizon's advertised it, but I don't know whether it's available through their, through their phone lines.
You can't get it through DirecTV.
So, I mean, it's a monopoly, and that's how they can get away with increasing their prices, and there's no competition.
It's been that way for years. I don't, you know...
Well, I will pass along to Atlanta Broadband, the, you know, we see more and more of our people going to Dish and other cable, and certainly, the first time something pops up for internet, we're going to jump on it, unless they make some changes.
I would have never thought of going to Dish or any of those, until I started looking at the price. And, like I said, I went to Direc. The only, I've had like three issues with Direc from not getting, or I should say, satellite provider, where I didn't get coverage. Once was the other night, about 2:00 in the morning, during the storm.
Why are you up watching TV?
I happened to wake up, my wife had it on, and...
You still had power at 2:00?
I had power, yeah. Yeah, I'm one of the fortunate ones, I'm sorry to say.
Oh, you have power now. Oh, do you hear that, everybody?
Okay.
Coming over for dinner.
Come on over. Bring the food. But, no, it went out during that, and I've had, I think, two times last winter, when we had a very bad snowstorm.
And you've got to expect that at some, to some...
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's trying to shoot it through the air. And, no, I've been nothing but happy with it.
Yeah, we switched to DirecTV in Shapley.
And the price was not even remotely close to what Metrocast was, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll make sure he hears, hears your concerns. In the meantime, are you willing to sign that, that the, that your attorney reviewed?
I'll make a motion, we sign it.
I'll second it.
All in favor? There's two spots here. Who's the test? That's you? There's just one line.
You can both just sign underneath it, just so we have all three of you on record.
I was one of the biggest skeptics on the satellite TV, but I've, I like it.
I'm a fortunate one with Time Warner Cable.
Do you get Time Warner?
I do.
Could you come right over the...
Right in, yeah, right over the border.
Do they do it for your whole road, or just...
No. I think it stops at my house. Because Metrocast wouldn't come down a quarter mile. They take a turn at Youngs Ridge, I believe, and they wouldn't come down the quarter mile to my house, so they lost.
They're still a company till the end of the year, so let's stop picking on it, just because we have a lawsuit filed for slandering them. Just our opinions, they don't mean anything.
But Time Warner just got bought by Spectrum, so...
Oh, they did?
I'm hoping good things continue with, with the new company.
And maybe they'll expand?
Maybe. Maybe they will.
Doubt it?
Public comment.
Dennis Long, this contract that you guys just signed, is that a 10-year contract?
The Atlanta Broadband?
Yeah.
It's not a contract. It's just an acknowledgement, a franchise, them taking over the franchise. This isn't the contract, like we have a 10-year contract, or we had a five-year with Channel 26.
Right.
They're not in negotiations of that yet. They want to get, because I did ask him about that, because we've been waiting, remember, you met with Mr. Corey, we've been waiting for a proposal. They want to take over first, they're just going to let things kind of smooth out, and then they're going to reproach the town about Channel 26. So, I have no idea what it's going to be. But this isn't a contract.
The truth of the matter is, the town can negotiate price. For those of you who weren't around when Metrocast came to town, the townspeople had to vote to let them in town. It wasn't a deal that the selectmen did, or anybody. And I realize, like Mike said one night, that another company can't use these lines, but another company can put in their own lines. All right? And there is other internet services out there. Dish has an internet service. I know that, because I have Dish. So, there, there is other alternatives out there, and...
You do get your internet through Dish?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And the whole Metrocast thing, five or six years ago, you could get a total package with them for 150 bucks, 110 bucks, under 12 bucks. And then it's now up to, what, 180 or something for the same thing?
Almost over 200.
And it's absolutely ridiculous. And I wouldn't sign a contract with anybody without negotiating price, and no, and without negotiating benefit to the town. I think Metrocast is taking advantage of the town of Acton over the years, and I think they're still doing it. And I, I think it's highway robbery. When, when I moved to the place I built, they wanted $450 to run a line from the pole outside my house, which is 30 feet from my house, into the house. And I says, "No way." You know, that's just absolutely ridiculous. And, because it doesn't matter to them, because everybody else is paying through the nose for what they're getting. So, I just don't want the town to enter into anything too serious with anybody, because I'm sure that somebody will want our business. And you can negotiate price with these people. Now, I want you to sign the contract, but before you do, you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. I mean, we, we can reiterate, and as I go back through the table of contents and the resolution, I mean, this is, you know, the purchase, the purchase agreement of Metrocast's equipment, the, what their plans are, their, their financial information. I mean, I, you know, we can double check with Brad. I mean, he would have, you know, to confirm that's not, it's not obligating the town to anything like that, if you'd like, but...
Right. That's not what I was getting off the...
Right. I mean, did you read this?
Oh, no. That's what the lawyers are for.
Hello, Susan.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to continue the conversation on Metrocast. I would love it if the town tried to negotiate with other companies to come in, because the cost of the Metrocast, and I only use them for internet, I think I pay close to 80 bucks a month. And, you know, I'm not doing, I, I probably have less TVs and all that other stuff than the average family does. You know, we have a couple of computers, a couple of TVs, and that's about it. So, I do think that you can find somebody else that is willing to negotiate with the town, because if you're looking at taking all the people that live here that have internet, I mean, I can't imagine another company wouldn't want to at least discuss it with us. And if Metrocast knows you're discussing it with other people, which I would tell them you are, then maybe you can negotiate a better price. Because what they're doing to the people, their customer service is awful. Their prices are crazy. I mean, I'm sure you get Time Warner, you probably pay half of what the rest of the town pays. I mean, why wouldn't they want to come further into town, is my point. And I think we'll never know unless you ask them, right? What's the worst thing that could happen? They could tell you to go take a fly and leap, right?
Yeah.
Just talk to them. Another thing, I really would like you to reconsider the talk time. And before you say no to me, the thing is, is, what I'm concerned about is, I hope you don't bring this rule to the town meeting as well. Because we have a hard time driving attendance to the town meetings, and then you put a time limit on it, people will be like, "Why am I wasting my time going there, if I can only talk for two or three minutes?"
If they want to talk for more, if they want to talk for more, then they need to be placed on the agenda. We're just trying to get order, I mean, it was your suggestion, to get order to the meetings.
I think what she's saying, though, right, well, I think what she's saying, and I can clarify that, in regards to the town meeting, the Board of Selectmen don't have the authority to put a policy in place to limit speaking on town floor. You've heard people in the audience before say, "Move the question," and when they do, then moderator takes a vote, and if two-thirds decide to move the question, then the conversation is over. But this board doesn't have the authority to limit speaking at town meeting. Only the voters sitting there do.
I still think you should consider it, because you don't want people thinking that you don't want to hear from the taxpayers.
If they want to speak more than three minutes, then they can be put on the agenda under new business. That's all. Otherwise, you know, there's no flow, there's no order, there's no, there's no order.
I, I agree you need order, but yet, at the same time...
Right.
You know, I just wanted you to reconsider it, because a lot of people would like to see, not have a talk time. I understand that you have to say to people occasionally, "And your point is," and, "Could you get to your point, please?" I, I understand that.
Well, it's just more of a comment section, not like, "I need to talk to you about this. It's going to take five minutes." If that, if that's the case, then they should be put on the agenda, or, you know, maybe come in on a Thursday night.
So, that way, you get the time you need.
Yeah. And there's no rush.
But like tonight, I'm sitting here, talking about Metrocast. I had to comment on it. You know?
Yeah. And, I mean...
I mean, whatever you can do to lower my internet, I would love.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I use basic talk from my telephone, and Kate, I use the Dish. So, I mean, they have hurt themselves with people trying to figure out how to work around them. But the internet is the one thing none of us can work around.
It's time. Thank you.
Let's see what we can do.
All right. So, discussion on public comment, what the direction from the board, and direction to pursue and what not to pursue. So, we had Metrocast, do you want me to pursue surrounding companies, and see if we have, if we can find any...
I would give, I mean, I don't know, is Fairpoint nearby? I feel like people used to have Fairpoint, like the Milton Mills.
Let me find out more details about the lines and who owns them. I mean, we've, we've...
Have you talked with Spectrum?
No.
What about Spectrum?
DSL, it doesn't have enough...
Fairpoint is DSL?
Yeah.
All right, so...
All right. So, we can, I can look into that piece, not for next week, but for the following week, meeting times, I mean, the speaking time.
We're keeping it at three.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Thank you. And that was all, that was it for public comment?
Yep.
Yes. Announcements. Did you have something?
No, somebody put her hand up. I just didn't know.
Oh, any more public comments?
Did you want to speak? Just come on up if you had something to say.
Yes.
Hi.
I'm Dan Stephens, and I live on Youngs Ridge Road, and I'll try to keep this under three minutes. Thanks for listening to my concerns, and I...
Use the microphone.
Just pull it down a little. There you go.
Sorry, is that better?
Oh, that's better.
Perfect.
I'm here to talk about trucks tonight on Youngs Ridge Road, and we have a couple of concerns that I would ask that the town consider. The first concern is that, on a regular basis, we see large tractor-trailers coming up Youngs Ridge Road. And for those of you that don't know, we are the first farm on the left, as you go up on Youngs Ridge Road, where the sign says, "Out of a limb woodworking." So, we're seeing large 18, 16-wheels, however many wheels they have, going up that road on an ongoing, regular basis. Today, I drove down to the, near the end of Youngs Ridge, to verify that indeed, there is a weight sign posted before the New Hampshire border that limits truck size on that road to 3 ton, or 6,000 pounds. And out of my own personal curiosity, I just did a little research, but an 18-wheeler without any weight on it whatsoever is 18,000 to 21,000 pounds, and with weight, it's 42,000 to 46,000 pounds. So, there's large vehicles going up that road that look like they're probably taking a shortcut over to New Hampshire. That, that would at least be my guess. As the weather gets cooler, we're not seeing as many trucks. We see more of them during the summer months, for sure. But I'm bringing that to your attention. The second issue that we have with trucks on Youngs Ridge, if you think about the way the road slopes down, as you come down to Route 109, and we are also seeing huge tractor-trailers coming down the road, trucks very frequently use their Jake brakes. And they hit their Jake brakes right about, just before our driveway, or after our driveway, because that's when the Noel Down runs. And, and we have some concerns about the noise. I'm aware that there's not a Jake bake, break, Jake, break ordinance here in town. But we have concerns about the noise. And lastly, and I appreciate very much that there's 35-mile speed zones posted on that road, but I can assure you that, without any question whatsoever, that speed limit, particularly coming down to Route 109... particularly coming down to Route One-O-Nine, is routinely not followed by trucks and other vehicles, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions for you. Youngs Ridge Road, that's the one by the vet, that goes up by the vet? Okay. This posted sign you saw, I think probably would be on Canal Bridge?
It's before the bridge, that's correct.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, that definitely limits it going over the bridge. I'm just wondering, is it trucks that are doing something up in the area up there?
Sometimes we see construction trucks, and I don't have any issue with that, that's not the trucks that I see. Some of the trucks, after having this conversation with Elise and Jennifer, I've been trying to pay a little more closely attention. Some of them are the Big C on trucks that are, that appear to be coming out of the sandpit right across the road from Youngs Ridge, I've been paying more attention. And when it's summertime, I'm happy to walk, sit out there with my coffee and my book and take pictures and get additional information, I'm not willing to do that quite yet now.
Yeah, I'm just curious where they're going, that's, you know, I, I know they're not supposed to go over that bridge, that is a...
Well, it's a shortcut to, to New Hampshire, but...
Yeah, we gotta find out if they are going over it, and if they are, that does need to cease, 'cause that's not good.
Any other issue, sir, is, is that they're, they're ruining that road. The, the down part, the, the piece of road down near our home is recently been redone, but when I drove up the other part of the road, they're just destroying that road for sure, during the wintertime, okay.
Do you have any more questions?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
You have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
And just while she's up there, so I can certainly speak to the Sheriff's Department, and we can see if we can get some more coverage, or, you know, as far as speeding, a lot of times, once they're out there a few times, and, so we'll ask him to go over there. I mean, does the town have the right to put a sign up that says, "No Jake brakes"? We can ask the road commissioner about that.
It would be an ordinance.
It would be an ordinance that has, has to allow it.
Yeah.
Oh, we have to, oh, to get permission.
She had a, one of the things that she mentioned that we talked about was finding out where these, these trucks are coming from, because I really feel like some phone calls and, you know, reminders and stuff might be...
I think that would take care of a lot of it, yeah, yeah.
Company gets wind that, you know, we see them more often than not going over that bridge, and, you know.
Yeah, a lot of times the, the company may not know where their drivers are.
Taking shortcuts.
I've found a few on, on Hopper Road, too, that they're not supposed to be on, and they've actually stopped one and talked to one.
I'm sorry?
Company names are good.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Yeah, if you could come up with that, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll see if we can get some more patrol over there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Speaking of speed limits, signs and not following them, you, we was on a list to get one of those, this is your speed?
Speed surveys?
Yeah.
I can tell you that Mr. Landry has signed for the request. It's, it's a process. The last time we went through this, it was, I wanna say, six or eight months before we heard from him, so.
Okay.
I will follow up with him in the next week or so by email, make sure that it's still on his to-do list.
Okay.
I got one other quick thing I'll just bring up, which I probably should've brought up under central main power, but just generator safety. For those that may be having a generator running right now and are fortunate enough to be watching us, keep an eye on your generators, don't use them inside, don't use them inside your garage. A lot of people will put a generator in their garage and even keep the door up, but they'll have the generator inside the building running. If your garage is attached to your house, you still can get carbon monoxide in your house. If you don't have detectors, you may not be waking up the next morning to worry about that generator. So just keep in mind, you know, how, how you're using your generator, if you don't have it hooked in properly, per se, make sure you shut your main off in your house that goes outside the central main power, 'cause you can not only damage your generator when the power comes on, you could very easily kill the central main power worker, 'cause that power would backfeed out onto the poles. So, that's all, I would, I just wanna make sure I mention that.
Good to know, thank you. Happy Halloween. Be careful of all those trick-or-treaters out there. Announcements for the night, Crock Fest, the library's holding their third annual Crock Fest, chowder and chili cook-off this Saturday, five to seven, it's five dollars to come in and judge, and you get to try everybody's chili and chowder, it will fill you up for five bucks. There's no Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, November seventh, we have the state elections that day, as well as the twenty-eighth for the marijuana moratorium. State election on November seventh, Town Hall and Transfer Station is closed on November eleventh for Veterans Day. Town Hall is closed on November twenty-third and twenty-fourth for Thanksgiving. Town Marijuana Moratorium election on November twenty-eighth. Board of Selectmen office hours are November second, ninth, and sixteenth, seven to eight. And our upcoming meetings, Thursday, November second, Warrant and Finance at six P.M. Thursday, November ninth. Warrant and Finance, six P.M. Thursday, November second, Planning Board at seven downstairs. Friday, November third, Marijuana Committee at six P.M. Friday, November tenth, Marijuana Committee at six P.M. Tuesday, November fourteenth, Board of Selectmen, five P.M. Thursday, November sixteenth, Planning Board, seven P.M. downstairs. Thursday, November sixteenth, Recreational Committee at seven. Friday, November seventeenth, Marijuana Committee at six. Tuesday, November twenty-first, Board of Selectmen, five P.M. Thursday, November thirtieth, Cemetery Committee at five. That is all.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Good night.